Okay, I'd like to call to order the October 8th Board of Education Workshop. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this brings us to our first public content section of the night. Do we have anyone making public comment? Okay. Then we'll move on to the main feature, the Somers Central School District Plan of Excellence, School Success Plans. I don't know how we're starting this, Harry, if there's a particular order.
Yes. We'll begin with the success plan for the school district. But first, I'd like to introduce the members of the administration that we have with us tonight, since we will be doing the success plans for each of the elementary schools as well as the district. We have Meg Benedetto from Primrose Elementary School, Linda Belger from SIS, and filling in for Jen Mangoni at the middle school is Kristin Muchacharo, and Pete Rodriguez from the high school. And Meg is filling in for Katie also today. And then we have on the other side of the aisle, the administrative cabinet who will be contributing also along the way. So we'll start with the last board meeting. We started the introduction of the Forward in Excellence Report for 2425. We kicked off with the first pillar, the professional learning communities. And if we look at the success plan for the district, you'll see the six pillars listed. And under the professional learning communities, the one that we did last board meeting, we just look to expand on the professional learning opportunities for best instructional practices and that we will revise the curriculum review process. Members of our learning office, Liz Turner and Tara Kearns, are going to lead us through the rest of the success plan with some support from Deanna Miller and Stacy Elconan.
Thank you so much. So to kick things off tonight also, in addition to that professional learning community information, we'll focus in on 21st century knowledge and skills, one of our elements of excellence. And this is an element that we will actually highlight in further detail during a November meeting. So 21st century knowledge and skills, this is the area where we focus deeply on the academic growth of our students. Last month, when we shared in our update on professional learning, we are continuing our partnership with PLC Associates in the area of literacy in K through eight. And this year, there is a dedication at all levels to continue to examine those best practices when it comes to the science of reading. At the K-5 level, really honing in and learning the new approach of wit and wisdom for the knowledge building block. And at the 6-8 level, supporting both ELA teachers and teachers of other content areas in taking a look at those practices and also adapting curriculum where necessary to reflect those key components of the science of reading and what that looks like for a secondary level. This work also ties really tightly with our K-12 focus on the multi-tiered system of support structures for our students, helping to target instruction in the classroom setting as well as in small group settings. This year, we are also partnering with Anshula Sobrin, who is our Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's math and data consultant. And she will partner with us to support teachers K through 12 in reviewing our instruction and practices when it comes to teaching math. She will help us to review our alignment to state standards and to provide some further learning around differentiation and the use of assessment to tailor instruction in math for students. This year, we're also reviewing digital platforms that can help support our MTSS work, a platform that will give us both broad district views of student performance as well as more granular views on individuals that can be used by our whole child success teams in each of the buildings to support individual students. There's so many important points of data in supporting students. There's the academic data, there's attendance, social emotional supports, participation in extracurricular activities. So it's nice to have one digital platform that can kind of create a clean portfolio view on a student and how they're doing in school and their participation. And that should be accessed by any adult working with the student so that you can really tailor instruction and support. So once we've identified that best tool, the next step would be planning the training involved for both the administrative team as well as teacher teams and how to use a tool to really strengthen our efficiency in collecting data, housing it, and using it for planning purposes. So those will be our key areas of focus broadly to support students' academic skills this year.
So another area, one of our buckets, one of our pillars, is social, emotional, and physical wellness. And you see here in the first bullet that we talk about continuing tier one classroom lessons and tier two and three. That goes back a little bit to what Liz Turner was saying prior about MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Not only do we want to be able to provide that for students for academic needs, we also want to be able to provide that for social, emotional learning and needs. So at a tier one level, students, all students, experience classroom lessons provided by our wellness teams. Those include social workers, school counselors, school psychologists. And then there are students who may need more direct instruction in coping skills or social skills. And so that may be a tier two level where they participate in, sometimes they meet during lunchtime or during other parts of the day, during the Wynn Block. And then there may be students who need even additional support beyond that. So those, when we talk about tier one, two, and three, tier one is for all students, and tier two and three are tailored to specific groups of students who may need additional support on top of getting the tier one. We're also going to expand professional learning opportunities on executive functioning. We know that this is a big area of need in terms of supporting students' social, emotional well-being because if they feel secure in what they need to have with them and what's expected of them and how to meet time limits and obligations, if we explicitly teach those things, they have a better sense of well-being and they feel less, to use a very big vernacular term, stressed out about being in school. And so we want to build those coping skills and those strategies explicitly. And then last but not least, we want to improve family access, 612, to therapeutic services. And that's already taken place this year. There's a person working full-time with us to provide that support to families that is here, both in this building and at the high school, part-time this year through a partnership with a community agency. So those are some of the big buckets. We have planned for social, emotional, and physical wellness. And also, I believe Mr. Kavanaugh will be giving an update to the board in more detail about that.
That'll be at the October 22nd meeting coming up for the Forward in Excellence Report on Social, Emotional Wellness. And then later this year in March, I believe, we'll be digging into the next element, which is global citizenship. So this year, one of our areas of focus for global citizenship is further developing K-12 curriculum and learning experiences on computer science and digital fluency. Our secondary schools will be performing an analysis to identify where the New York State's standards in these areas are currently being addressed across the curriculum and where there may be gaps. At the K-5 level, that gap analysis has taken place, and the buildings have used team time and summer hours to map where our students are currently experiencing these standards in action at the elementary level. And we've also implemented the use of the Typing.com program for grades three through five as one of the action steps when it comes to the computer science and digital fluency standards. The high school will be virtually hosting its IB Middle Years Program verification visit on November 12th and 13th, so that's coming up soon. Visitors will have the opportunity to meet with district and building administrators, with teachers, with students, parents, and members of the board, as well as observe classrooms during that visit. And that is a key crucial step to the authorization for the high school as an NYPD for grades nine and 10, which is very exciting. A lot of hard work has been put into that over the past several years in developing units and looking at approaches to teaching and learning for our ninth and 10th grade teachers. And finally, world language learning is being piloted at Primrose this year. So our students in K through two are gaining some exposure to Spanish specifically. They're learning basic greetings, colors, and songs. And you will hear more about this from Ms. Benedetto shortly.
So another focus area in our district success plan this year is family and community engagement with the goal of strengthening and nurturing connections across the Somers community. The board has a very important role this year of choosing our new superintendent. So as a district, we are committed to helping to support that search in any way we can. Also, in addition to this, we are looking at hosting our second annual Tusker Cafe. If you recall, last year, we held a belonging event in conjunction with the community, which was a success, and we would like to continue that in the spring as well.
And the last element of excellence, but certainly not least, is fiscal stewardship. So the couple goals for this year is completing the 2023 capital facilities project. It's been a busy few months, as you may have noticed, outside of the high school. The tennis courts are the furthest along, should be wrapping that up in the next week or two. Baseball field is underway, getting a little closer to being finished. Still got ways to go, got to put down the turf still, but it's getting close. And softball, they actually just mobilized this week and started some of the construction over there. So they'll hit that pretty strong in the next couple of months, weather permitting. So hopefully, no snow calls until January. And then the next goal is just to achieve a successful 2025 bond vote. We've talked many times over the past year, we're going to be talking a lot more over the next few months about our upcoming bond proposition that we'd be asking the voters to vote for in May. We have our first steering committee coming up tomorrow afternoon. And then from there, again, we'll break it down into smaller building-level committees to help us finalize the scope of work for that upcoming project.
Okay. And now we'll move into the individual success plans for the building, starting with Primrose.
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Kearns for that teaser. Our coming attractions, we'll get to that later on, but start reading off with 21st century knowledge and skills. I think the community has heard us speak about the science of reading for several years now. And anybody who's been following the news, social media, you've certainly become familiar with the pillars of reading instruction in Scarborough's rope, so I won't go back through all of that. But suffice it to say, what you've been seeing and experiencing at Primrose over the years is continuing because phonics instruction is still being supported by foundations, and it's going rather smoothly many years into learning that technique and using that program our students continue to achieve with it. We also added a few years ago phonemic awareness program, Haggerty. Many of the families have seen those chopping hands at home and how students are breaking down the sounds that will become the building blocks of words. So that is also continuing. What's going to be new, and you'll hear Mrs. Belger and I both speak about it, is about wit and wisdom, adding a systematic and sequential way to introduce vocabulary and to follow up with comprehension questions to make sure that students are reading the ideas and the rich thoughts of the author and comprehending it and making sense of it and adding it to their world. So wit and wisdom, we are off and running. We've done an introduction with Module Zero and into Module One. What are some of the things that our students are experiencing? They're very much at their interest level of the K-1 and 2 students right now. For instance, the first module for kindergarten is the Five Senses with an essential question of how do our senses help us learn, something that they can really sink their teeth into. That's what we're looking for in this knowledge block. First grade is experiencing a world of books, and their essential question is how do books change lives around the world? That is definitely something that anybody could grapple with, knowing that the, once you pick up a book, no matter where you are in the world and how you access the book, it takes you someplace different in your mind, and it really can change a life. I think that a lot of us are here today because of that. Second grade is looking at a season of change. Their essential question is how does change impact people and nature, turning on the news and seeing what we're experiencing down south right now. It also correlates with the second grade science unit. So we're looking for those connections, not only to the world and to my personal experience, but also to other disciplines. And that is something that we have now added by adding wit and wisdom. And then finally, fluency as a final pillar. No matter what you're reading, whether it's lines and attacks, directions, there's a certain way that you scoop, a certain way that you build the phrasing that shows your fluency as you read orally. But I'm going to save some for my colleague, Mrs. Belger.
So Meg did not leave much about wit and wisdom, but it's so important, the continuity between Primrose and SIS and the building from one school to another as the students progress. At SIS, we are also doing wit and wisdom, but we also continue with that phonemic awareness using foundations in third grade where our students finish the program, and we've had great success with that. And we're excited this year with wit and wisdom and that whole content block. Wit and wisdom takes communication skills, vocabulary, comprehension, syntax, writing, grammar, punctuation, expressive writing, and response to text, and combines it all in one block for ELA. And everything is connected to one another, and those connections really help the students. Our third graders right now are learning all about the sea, so there's a lot of science connections plus their writing. There's a huge art component too as well. We're students, I watched a lesson the other day with a wood blocking of the sea, and the conversations they had, the kids are really rising to the occasion, and you know, we've set the bar high, and they're reaching that. It's surprising when you listen to them that, wow, these are our third graders. Our fourth graders are learning figuratively and literally about the heart. They are reading a nonfiction book all about the chambers of the heart and how the heart works, and coincided with that, they're reading Love That Dog, a poetry book which also focuses on the heart. Our fifth graders are working on westward expansion with a novel study that they dove right into. So it's really encompassing everything, and that ELA block is very busy, it's active, and there's a lot going on, and the kids are really seeing the connections. Also, like Liz said, we have Anshula coming to really help us explore our math practices and our strengths and how we can make those better for students to meet the needs of all of our students and differentiate our math instruction. So we're pretty busy.
And so the science of reading continues at SMS at the middle school. Thank you, I'm a little short. But we're continuing to embed the practices of science and reading across all content areas and making sure that we are embedding systems and practices that students can utilize across all disciplines. We're also examining student growth through their scores on STAR exams, DIBBS, iXL, in order to identify their strengths and their areas of growth so that we can further differentiate and individualize our support periods during the Wynn Block that we have. What's great about our program here is that during the Wynn Block, it's also an opportunity for the students to self-advocate. We want them to take ownership and accountability over their learning. So in addition to having database groups based off of these assessments, we're also having the students and encouraging the students to determine where they think they need the support and schedule themselves to have more intensive instruction during that time as well.
So I'm going to shift a little bit to talk about math. And so at the high school, kind of in anticipation of our K-12 math alignment, we are introducing a new course this year, an Algebra 1A, and subsequently in the following year, an Algebra 1B in geometry topics. And we really hope this is our Goldilocks course and finding just the right spot for many of our kids. Currently, or prior to this year, we've had a special class, 1212 math class or 1211 math class, and then a typical algebra class. This is kind of right in the sweet spot in between. It's a co-taught class, but it's not co-taught for students just with IUPs, it's co-taught for anybody who's enrolled in the class with two experienced math teachers. And really trying to find the right pace of algebra so that students will be ready to take algebra in their third semester of this course in January of next year and really meeting them where they are. So it is that kind of tier one level of MTSS support, if we think about that, that classroom instruction. And the idea here is that we'll also keep them on pace with their typical peers who would be done with geometry in their second year of high school as well, so that those students could then go on to take a typical math curriculum for their final two years of high school.
So when you say about algebra, just really quick, you mean that they could take the algebra regents in January of 2025?
The plan would be for them to take the January regents in the second year after three semesters of algebra, yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to loop to social, emotional, since Chris is already on there? And we go back the other direction, or you want to jump right back to you? I'm throwing you off.
No, no, no. You'll throw off our continuity here. Thank you. Shifting gears to social, emotional, and physical wellness, too, I would say that the colored and character days, K through five, are a longstanding tradition, but we are very grateful to our combined social, emotional team who spent time this summer rethinking these days and aligning them better perhaps to the middle school and high school and creating that through line again and that continuity for all students and their families. First of all, big shout out to the families. We really appreciate you washing that orange shirt the night before because that's when you found out about the colored and character days. But in all seriousness, the colored and character days this year are aligned with the learner profiles that students will experience later on when they come to SMS, when they go to SHS. Introducing a concept like being principled is not beyond a four, five, or six-year-old. When we explain it to them and we talk about what do you do when no one is watching? Are you making the right choice? Are you standing up for yourself and others? If you are doing that and you're an upstander for other people, then you're also a risk taker because it takes a certain amount of risk and belief in yourself to do those things. So why not celebrate those traits? Why not illuminate those traits in ourselves and others and spend time doing it? It definitely seemed like a worthwhile endeavor. So as I mentioned, September, the trait was principled, and we wore red for that. Coming up in October, hashtag spoiler alert, we will be celebrating Unity Day and upstanders going, you know, standing up to bullying and being a part of bullying prevention. So we'll be wearing orange. And that is amount of risk-taking, you know, that is involved, especially in one so young. So it was very much a joint effort between Primrose and SAS, and we're very grateful to our counseling team for aligning us in that way.
So we are also doing, we talked a lot about risk-taking today at our town meeting and watched some Olympic athletes and how they took risks. But we're also focusing a lot on our tier one social, emotional learning. At SIS this year, we have a new six-day schedule, which has really given us a little flexibility. Our guidance counselor and our social worker are able to push in to do more of those in-class lessons on focused topics. And we've also been able to add health, health and wellness, with one of our PE teachers pushing into classrooms so that each class will have about 12 health sessions over the course of the year in all three grades. And the topics they are focusing on is the heart and the circulatory system, which works out really well for fourth grade right now, the respiratory system, the food plate, what we eat, what we put in our body, how we keep our body healthy, how we exercise, fighting germs, the importance of sleep, peer pressure, and all those vitamins and things that we need and to make healthy choices, which really ties in nicely with our Red Ribbon Week coming up, where we focus on just healthy choices and what choices that kids can make for themselves to keep their body and their mind ready to come to school and learn every day. So those are really the things we're working on, along with our colored and character days.
At SMS, some of the priorities that we have put into place for social, emotional, and physical wellness would be to continue to develop our middle school mentoring program that consists of current eighth graders who applied at the end of seventh grade to be mentors to our newly transitioned sixth-grade students who came to us from SAS. And the purpose is to make sure that they feel included in the school, middle school atmosphere. They join the sixth graders during their scheduled lunch periods, and they participate in positive conversations, games, and social interactions to help them acclimate to middle school. Additionally, we've developed a school culture committee this year. This is new, and it is to create a sense of belonging for all members of the middle school. So currently, that committee consists of parents, teachers, teaching assistants, a few students, custodians, all members of our school community to help create what we hope will be a future sense of belonging here at SMS.
And at the high school, the point I'm going to emphasize is our wellness teams. And Stacy talked about it a little bit before. If a student isn't emotionally ready to learn, it's that much harder to find success when they walk in the door. And so traditionally, a student's point of contact, if they wanted to seek out some help in that area and social, emotional side of their life in the high school, would be a single counselor. And the wellness teams that we've developed aim to really expand that circle of adults that know these students well and are able to support them at any moment, you know, just based on who's available and who they might see. So the teams consist of an assistant principal, two counselors, a social worker, and a psychologist, and any one of those people can help a student when they're seeking out help in our counseling office. The other purpose there is for that team to really problem-solve when it comes to kids. And this team, these two different teams, it's basically an alphabetical split at the high school. These two teams meet weekly to really do a deep dive on students. Often, teachers will, you know, point out a student who might be in need of support, but the teams are doing a real data dive around attendance, behavior, and academics every week to look at where they can support students. And it's really now we're talking about the next level of MTSS support, where that tier two and tier three, where we might recommend a student for the academic support center or some other service that we might be able to provide for them. So this is really targeted intervention by the wellness team and really a problem-solving model so that students can find the most success. And over the course of the four years, that team of five will really know that student well, and they'll have, you know, instead of that, just that one counselor, there's four or more adults who know that student well and could be that go-to adult for that student.
So would we like to pivot to global citizenship for a moment, following up with Mrs. Kearns' teaser about world language coming down towards Primrose? It's been something that we've heard from our community for a while now. Studies show just how beneficial it can be for young learners to be exposed to a different language early on and as early as one can possibly do. So we're very grateful to be sharing Caitlin Purnell with SAS. She's coming to give some, just some touches to each of the homerooms and experience in the Spanish language. The children are very excited about it. They talk about it, they light up when she comes in the room, and they are feeling very fancy. When I walk into the room in the afternoon and they are realizing it's not Buenos dias, it's buenas tardes, and they are very excited to be getting it correct, to learn different words for colors and to experience something about the outside world inside of Somers. So it's something that has been very worthwhile. They're enjoying the vocabulary, the songs, the experiences that Ms. Purnell brings to the classroom. And the teachers are also excited to see their students in a slightly different light, watching them experience this additional language. So we are very grateful for SAS's partnership and sharing her.
So at SIS, we have had world language for two years previously. The previous experience that our students have had has been through our special areas where Mrs. Purnell has co-taught art, music, and library with these teachers, and the students have been exposed to Spanish in that manner. So they were learning all their colors and art and the verbs of painting and reading and words that way. This year, we have been able to, with our new schedule, Spanish is now a standalone special where each student gets 40 minutes a week cycle of direct Spanish instruction, where it's just focused on Spanish and not with the special area, the arts added into that. And the students are very excited. They go in and they're doing their full Spanish class, and they're really speaking more. She has her 10 minutes of time where it's only Spanish allowed, and there's an emergency wall if they forget something they need to say and they have to ask a question. So they're very excited about that, and we're looking forward to continuing that as we move forward.
Talk about risk-taking, too.
That's risk-taking. The students are doing a great job.
Over at SMS, we are continuing to integrate our International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program and focusing again on the progression of the NYPD Eighth Grade Community Project. We will be utilizing the advisory period that we have. It's the Monday during Wynn, it's known now as the Tusker Experience, and it's been divided up across the three grades, Tusker Beginners for sixth, Tusker Pathways for seventh, and Tusker Achievers for eighth. And during that time, they'll be working with their teacher or mentors, developing that community project and getting that and getting that underway for our showcase at the end of the year.
To continue that conversation about NYPD and Ms. Kern's touched on this. Our big focus here is our verification visit in mid-November. This is a culmination of work that started prior to COVID in 2019. And it's a real shift of our ninth and 10th grade units to a framework that builds upon the learner profile and uses student inquiry as a model for learning. There's a real focus on communication and social skills, self-management, research and critical thinking with this framework. And it is a continuation of what's happening at SMS. And we're starting to really bear the fruits of that work at SMS where students are coming up to us, really living that learner profile, talking about it in a way that feels really organic and comes natural to them. We see that mostly in Tusker 101 where we focus on each of the traits of the learner profile as well. Students will demonstrate their learning throughout. And in 10th grade, in a year from now, we're going to run up a small pilot this year, but really in a year from now, they will culminate their 10th grade experience with a personal project. And so that's really where we're aiming all our global citizenship focus.
So rounding out our success plans, family and community engagement, where would we be without it? September was a whirlwind with back-to-school nights. We truly appreciate the parents who tag teamed in for certain nights or arranged babysitting so that they could come and meet their children's teacher and start to engage in this school year and this journey with us. We are also very grateful for our partnership with SEF, with the PTA, with SEPTA. And the things that we gain from them, more than just monetary grants and such, but the partnerships that we enjoy with them and how they round out our students' educational experiences. So that is always something that we have worked on. At Primrose, we're also going to focus on student attendance and punctuality. It may seem strange at a K1 and 2 school, but the data across the nation is showing that in these recent years, families have struggled. Families have struggled with attendance and punctuality and getting students ready into school on time. And we're not talking about students who are genuinely ill. We are very grateful to our families who take off of work and stay home with them because they can't come to school because they have a fever. They're still taking medication. What we're talking about are what are the things that get in the way of a student coming and arriving on time? It does increase their anxiousness when they come into a room that is already in session. The morning meeting has already started. People are already getting to know each other. And I don't really know that person's name yet. It, it's something that is a struggle and it starts the day a little bit off for the child. And then also, you know, looking at the data about how it impacts a student's achievement and how they see themselves as a learner when they're missing a number of days. So when this happens, if it's happening for a reason of illness, of course, a family is going to need support from the district. So we're going to engage with that family. We're going to offer support. We have a wonderful resource in our family and community liaison. So she has been doing some really great work. But our social, emotional team is also going to find out what it is that you need from us that might help you get to school on time and, and ready to roll and how can we partner with you in the process? And then, you know, also, as we were talking about this and mulling this over, we were looking through data. A few years ago, ASCD, I think it was about a year and a half ago, ASCD came out with a report saying that there was a real impact at the high school level of students missing class or missing days of instruction and how it impacted them and their plans for graduation. But and after the high school, one of the most impacted places was kindergarten, which was a little bit of a head-scratcher for educators across the nation. But then as we looked at our Primrose data, we started to see that also reflected in it. So like anything, we're going to put our efforts, our money where our mouth is and we're going to reach across and try and figure out what is it that is a stumbling block for the family? There is a lot on a family nowadays. And so how can the school district support you? It's your family's school, not just your child's school.
And also for both buildings, really building that family partnership and that engagement. By, before COVID, we had many activities that parents came into the schools. As COVID came, we got rid of a lot of things and now trying to bring that connection back. Having curriculum nights or curriculum hours, a lot of our teachers have been having and writing celebrations and full grade level activities that we might not have had in the past that we're bringing back. Our third grade Halloween parade and craft outside that we invite families to come to. Fourth grade with their holiday handicrafts and having families volunteer and come in and help us. Our fifth grade culture projects and really bringing our families in and connecting with them is really a goal for both of our buildings, to bring that partnership back. Because when we have everyone working together, the family, the school and the students, that's how everyone's going to be successful.
We also would really like to encourage our parents and our families to come see us and be part of the conversations that we have. We will have a middle years program information evening. That's October 23rd. So that's very soon. And not only is that open to our current families here, but we also welcome anyone at SAS or Primrose, especially those fifth grade families, if they'd like to get some information as they prepare to graduate from elementary school and come to the world of middle school. Administrator coffee sessions will continue each trimester and we would love for parents to come and join us and meet us and share their thoughts and ideas, express their concerns, questions. Parents and families give us some of the best feedback and we really would like to hear from everyone. And additionally, at the end of the year, we will have our NYPD community showcase. This was a wonderful event attended by a lot of people. And we really will start to see the fruits of the labors of our students. For example, one thing that's brought up often is that there's a crosswalk going by Bobos, which was a community project for the eighth grade. So we're very proud of that. They really took it and made a real-life connection. And now that will be impacted as they drive up and down the road all the time. They'll know that they were part of making that a safer place for the community.
Just going to have Ms. Benedetto come talk about attendance at the high school now, too. Wonderful job and motivated me.
Very passionate.
And, and I'm going to focus on this, the same topic. And I think Meg put it succinctly though, but we want students to be in here and we want to partner with families to make that happen. And so we're, there, you know, there can be a punitive approach, but that's really not where we're starting from. And again, that wellness team, that group of five folks who knows our kids really well, they're using attendance data right off the bat so they can intervene early on for a student who might be dealing with attendance issues and partner with that family and find the best way to motivate that student to come in, to support that family, whatever it takes to, to make that happen. And so really using the data there is important. It's not just a hunch, right? But a student's been out three days. We, we have the, the numbers right in front of us that we need to get on top of this right away. And we know that students are, have a, are impacted when their attendance is not consistent. I think the other, the, the tricky part that we're continuing to see post-COVID is so much of the work that we provide is online, right? And so students are able to actually accomplish quite a bit on their own. So what is the motivating factor to be in the classroom and get that firsthand, in-person experience? That's going to be different from just downloading the worksheet on Schoology. And so really working with our teams of teachers to think about where is the bang for your buck when you're in the classroom? And so that, that it's not just a, I can do all this work outside of class. That is another factor to this that, that we hadn't really thought about when we came back and had so much of the work that we did already online.
Okay, we're going to move now to the K-12 SMART goals and Liz and Tara are going to take that off.
Thank you. Yes, as we shift the conversation and our principals get ready to share their SMART goals with us, I just wanted to note that this year we are also thinking about forms of assessment as part of our work on MTSS. I'm thinking about tools that are used for universal screening, tools that are used for progress monitoring, also some that have, have built-in instructional components to them. As you will hear tonight, we believe in keeping that pulse on both students' academic progress as well as the development of their soft skills or I like to say those skills for functioning in life from communication, organization. So tonight at the K-8 level, we will highlight the STAR assessment in reading and in math. And in recent information shared from Renaissance STAR, they have adjusted and re-normed their system. So prior to this, the scoring system was based on norms from back in 2017, so a little dated. They acknowledge though that students' performance nationwide fluctuated post-pandemic, as we've said over and over again in different meetings. Therefore, this year's scores and stars are based on norms from 2023. And they are more updated to reflect students' skills, more current to where students' levels of knowledge and skill development are now. And as a result of this, schools may experience a fluctuation in scores that they may have not have seen before. Some groups of students may have scores that go up, some may have scores that have gone down a bit. And you will see some of that, the similarity that in our information tonight. So this year, it's going to be even more important than ever to, to track that STAR progress of our students across the year. But to also look at additional measures of monitoring student progress. And it's great that our district for years now has relied on multiple measures to take a look at students' progress in these areas across a year and how they're developing. In particular, the tool iXL has become great for both progress monitoring and for providing supplemental practice for students in ELA and in math. Our teams are very interested in the possibilities of this tool. It's also has an approved universal screener. So wouldn't that be interesting to have something that was good for both universal screening purposes in tracking broadly as well as having those instructional resources built in? So definitely an important point of discussion this year and something that we will continue to share our learning on as the year continues. But I'll turn it over to our team now who will share their SMART goals.
So I think before we start talking about our SMART goals, I think as educators, we know first and foremost that we don't teach via philosophies and programs and curriculum. We teach the students in front of us. And that's an important starting point is who is in front of you in your class? Who is in front of you in your school? And looking at, using the data to look at those students at this moment in time. So data can be a starting point of learning about students. It can also be a starting point for questions. And looking at our Primrose data, first of all, I think at one of the spring meetings, one of our trustees mentioned that we're looking traditionally at the graduation data. So to illuminate that a little bit at Primrose, one of the reasons that looking at the graduation data makes sense is because of STAR in and of itself. When a first grader takes a STAR literacy assessment, it is STAR early literacy. It is a slightly different interface, questioning and types of questions that are given to students is more the underpinnings of literacy. It's not until you hit, you hit a critical threshold, which for most students happens the beginning of second grade, that you go on to STAR Reader, which is the platform that will carry throughout their, their time in SESD. So that's a slightly different nuance in Primrose, too. So when we look at our second grade students, my second grade parents out there, please do not worry. It is similar to the data starting points from last year, even with the changes in the cut scores. So right now, we have students who are experiencing STAR Reader for the first time in second grade. And 65% of our students met the proficiency level with that new cut score. And so using our projections from last year, it is a very likely goal that they will hit the 80% threshold by the time they graduate from Primrose and move on to SAS. Likewise, STAR math last year, at that tier one level of mastering our, our curriculum and instruction, we had 59%, a little bit off from last year. Last year was 62% to start the year. But we have a lot of supports that are in place. And as Mrs. Turner mentioned, this is only one bit of data. When we look at iXL, we look at DIBELS for literacy foundations, the curriculum-based assessments that we use, the interviews that we have with children and the work that we are doing with ANTULA this year to really look at the mathematical practices. It is highly likely that they are going to meet their 80% mastery goal. And the similar cohort last year did that with resounding success, not just meeting the goal, but surpassing it. So not to worry. We see bright things ahead. And then also, as Mrs. Muchachara had mentioned, our dedication to MTSS and our work with PLC Associates, working with our academic intervention providers, with our teacher colleagues and with the representatives and PLC Associates. We're going to spend time as data collaborators, unpacking the data, deciding next steps at the tier one, tier two and tier three level. Because it's more than just STAR. There's a lot of information about our children at our fingertips. And we just need to use it and tap into it to make the best decisions for them.
And as Meg is saying, this STAR is just one of our many assessments that we use. And what we're really looking at is growth for all students. Taking each student where they are and moving them forward on the continuum. Every child will learn. It's just some takes, takes some a little longer than others and some a little quicker. And it's our job to find the ways to really support them. So at SAS, our reading goal would be for our fifth graders there coming in, starting at the 80th percentile right now, which is a little higher than they have in the past. So we were very happy about that. And we feel confident that they'll reach the 85th percentile, especially with wit and wisdom raising the bar a little bit. Also, last year, in the past two years, we've really focused on helping all students, not even just the students who qualify for AIS or need those supports, but also looking at some of those students who don't really meet the criteria for AIS, but that we know need a little more small group targeted support and how we're able to offer that during WINTIME with that differentiated instruction. And also we've had the Reading Lab, which is a before-school program that is really for those tier one students that we can offer just that little bit of extra support and targeted on comprehension. So we're hoping with all of the programs and opportunities we have for students and the different programs, whether it's AIS, whether they're working in PAF or they're working in Orton-Gillingham or they're doing our rewards program, which is another AIS reading intervention program, that we will find the method and the way that we can really support that student. For math, we are trying to move our SMART goal and move our students from the 82nd percentile right now to the 86th percentile. And we're confident that with our math program, with the differentiated activities, with WINTIME, and we also have a math lab available for students that we feel need a little more support and ANTULA's help in really focusing in on our best strategies and differentiation that our students will be able to reach those goals.
Can I ask a quick question before you? So the percentages you're talking about are from the STAR specifically?
STAR specifically. They're just the one assessment for this.
It's the STAR assessment that the students just sat for in the month of September?
I just wanted to make sure I knew where the data point was coming from. That's all.
So looking at our current eighth grade students, 78% of our eighth grade students were at tier one reading proficiency. So we'd really like to have that closer to 85% at the end of the school year. And again, with all of the other assessments, like everybody has mentioned so far, their month of September was really dedicated to having the DIBELS be administered by our ELA team in order to get an additional component of data to use to structure our WINT groups and make sure that those groups are data-based and organized in a way that can best support the students individually and by differentiating those materials during that time. We're also working with PLC Associates to help us continue to embed those science of reading strategies across all content areas. Because as we grow in middle school, we see that all subjects get very, very literacy-heavy and it can be very challenging. The vocabulary in a science curriculum, for example, can be a daunting task to undertake at 12 and 13 years old. So we want to make sure we're supporting our students in all of those subject areas in order to help them gain that proficiency across the board. Additionally, in math, 81% of those students were at proficiency. We'd like to again move that to 85%. And like mentioned before, even using those smaller AIS services that we have for reading, but also the smaller groups that we have for math, utilizing the iXL strategy so that we can have more individualized support for all students is how we would hope to get to that goal.
So while the high school uses both STAR and iXL to determine tier one level support in math and English, I'm going to focus a little bit on the end of the high school career and our senior experience. As you might know, the, the state is looking at their profile of a graduate and just what it, it's looking for, for students to graduate with and be able to demonstrate. And so we believe our senior experience and an internship experience is really going to be a part of that, those requirements. So we're continuing to expand what our senior experience looks like. So it's now in its, starting its third year, culminating in 15 hours outside of class and looking to expand even beyond that. Outside of class, a project or internship. We often have students go to Primrose or work in the community or develop a, a special skill that they wanted to demonstrate. But we're trying to But we're trying to take that to the next level this year with a more public presentation of student skills, right? So this is the culmination of everything that students have done throughout high school and even middle school, if you're thinking back to the community project, community project, personal project in 10th grade, and now the senior experience in 12th grade. And it's one thing to present in front of your peers in your English class, it's a whole nother thing to be able to implement all the skills, communication and social skills that you've learned along the way and present publicly. And so we're looking to expand the public presentation aspect of our senior experience or our senior internship for this year.
Speaking for Primrose, I know that we would totally attend that event and cheer the students on because we have benefited from their senior experiences for a number of years now, and it's really enhanced our students' day-to-day lives.
So those are for students specifically who are taking a senior internship, is that what you're saying?
So the idea is that all students will have some form of senior experience. So students who might be testing an AP or IB exam might be in that testing timeline a little bit longer, so they might have a shorter requirement in terms of outside hours. But we're trying to make sure that all students have that experience where they're released from class at some point and are able to find that senior experience in some aspect of their, the community or in project.
Are there any other questions?
Can I go back to some of the success plans, just real quick? The Explore, you had, Pete, you had Explore Seal of Civic Readiness to increase students' participation in community service, is that, could you kind of talk a little more about that?
Yeah, so we did a really informal poll as students were graduating last year about how many students did community service. And we were, three quarters of our students reported they were already doing community service, either through clubs, LEOS, other organizations, on their own. And so the Seal of Civic Readiness, similar to the Seal of Bileiteracy, captures that and honors that work. And so there's some components along with coursework that they have to take and show, you know, demonstrate knowledge in certain social studies courses as well, but also have a level of community service to then apply for the Seal of Civic Readiness and demonstrate, again, with a public presentation about the work that they've done there. So we're just starting to kind of look into the requirements and see where that fits with what we currently offer.
And then I have another one. For the middle school, I see you have implementing co-teaching across all four content areas. So you're looking to have co-teach now for Science and Social Studies?
Yes, we do, starting this school year. So that is new that we implemented it this year. So across Science, Social Studies, Math, and ELA, we do offer co-teaching models. Prior to this school year, it was specific to ELA and Math only. And so it is something that we, again, that's all four content areas across all three grade levels. So it's something we're implementing, and we're doing a lot of internal professional learning and looking for outside supports about the different co-teaching strategies and way to have inclusive classroom environments. One of the great things is that I observed some students walking into a classroom the other day, and the way the classroom was set up, the student had said to one of their teachers, "Oh, we're doing parallel teaching today." So using the actual language of co-teaching models coming from a seventh grader, my jaw hit the floor, and I said, "Did he just ask what you're doing in there?" And so they are making sure the students are aware as to the models of teaching that they're using and why they're using it for certain learning experiences. And so far, it seems to have great success, and we're excited to see how that will continue over the next few years.
That's great, that's really great to hear.
I just wanted to also add that there was summer coursework, because it applies to what Liz and Tara went over for the summer coursework and all the professional learning opportunities. We, many of the teachers that are doing those new subject areas this year with a new partner participated in that co-teach partnership course, which had both a summer component and ongoing fall components. So just connecting all the dots.
That's great. And that's all I had.
Can I ask a couple of questions on the, on the reading particularly at Primrose and SIS and the introduction of wit and wisdom? I know this has been covered before, but I've actually had some members of the community reach out with questions about whether and to what extent the kind of wit and wisdom, Science of Reading is replacing phonics. And it seems to me, from what you're saying, Foundations is still there, Haggerty's still there, these, these new wit and wisdom is being overlaid on top of that. Is that, is that a fair way of putting it?
That was a nice way of putting it, thank you.
So we're not getting rid of phonics?
No.
We're supplementing it with wit and wisdom that is a broader integrated reading integration into other subject areas?
It's actually when we look at Foundations explicitly teaching the phonics, Haggerty explicitly teaching phonemic awareness, giving the students to put those things together as they're actually reading. And then also wit and wisdom helps with vocabulary, with fluency, with comprehension, with conversation for listening and speaking. So it doesn't claim to be a be-all, end-all for phonics or phonemic awareness, it is added to that to complete the pillars, if you will.
I was going to say, isn't that how they describe, like, the Science of Reading is that there's a series of pillars to hold up the whole structure? And so they're all different pieces of the puzzle, basically?
Yep. And I would add, too, from the state and their guidance, by September of 2025, it's a requirement for all schools to have Science of Reading approaches in place. And those approaches have to encompass all of those pillars. So there needs to be, I like to call it the two buckets, the bucket that focuses in on the phonemic awareness, the phonics, as well as the other bucket focusing on building background knowledge and vocabulary for comprehension.
I have to say, you guys have been so far ahead of the game as far as implementing all of that before September of 2025. So, thank you.
There were a couple of spots, talking about reflecting on some of the best practices in mathematics instruction, and differentiation was mentioned a lot, too. But what kind of process? Can you just talk about that a little more on what you kind of expect that process to be like?
I was going to say, Liz has really been our liaison to Antula.
Sure.
But they're, like, with anything, there's a whole lot of data to look at.
Yeah.
There is. And that was the first step of the process, is to allow Antula to look at our different data sets, from STAR to state testing, to iXL information, and even algebra information for the high school. And she's still in that process now of digging into that, seeing where are their patterns? Where are their students' strengths across the board? Or are there areas where we need to zoom in on and pay closer attention to? She'll take that information and debrief that and have conversations around that with administrators, with teams of teachers at each building. From there, it's also taking our feedback to say, you know, here's what we are noticing in our classrooms, for teachers to say, here is what I'm noticing when I'm working with my students. And to combine those two things, both student performance and teacher feedback, to prepare professional learning sessions that are really targeted and well-rounded, since they're based on those different components. So then that would be the cascade, is to have her do those sessions, plan professional learning from there, and have her keep coming back on site to host those sessions for our groups of teachers.
I also would be remiss if I didn't give a huge shout out to our math colleagues across the district, because they are dedicated to not just like, what is it that data is showing us, but also, how do the students see themselves? Do they see themselves as mathematicians? You know, as a grown-up, you hear people say, "Oh, I'm not a math person." Like, that's not acceptable. Everybody's a math person, everybody's a reader, everybody can see themselves somehow in mathematics. And I would say the Primrose team is especially passionate about it. One of the things that they're doing is a family math night. They started with first grade last year, and they're taking the 21st century knowledge and skills and combining that with the family and community engagement. This year, all three grade levels will have the opportunity to come and experience a math night with their child and get excited about what math has to bring to their lives.
Thank you.
No, I always find it exciting. And yes, everybody is a math person.
Always use it. Okay, and I guess we can move on to our Personnel Consent Agenda? Resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay. And then that brings us to our second public comment session. This can go for anything also not on the agenda. Okay. So all speakers will properly identify themselves, a maximum of a 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff members for a reply at a later time or date. And questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration, and later response for all written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Hi, guys. Give me one quick second while I wrote. I want to express some concern regarding communications and potential spread of misinformation at a board meeting. I know, deep down, you're all decent people, but during a meeting a few months ago, a member of the public spoke during the public comment session, attempting to support the difference, to show the similarities between the IB program and special education. While I appreciate the intent, I believe it's important to clarify that special education is a legal right for students, while participation in the IB program is a choice for students. These two areas should not be combined or compared as they served a distinct purpose within our education system. I hope the new members will take the time to truly acclimate themselves with special education program and ensure that all student rights are upheld. It is crucial to continue fostering a system where special education students and services are available to every student who needs them, and it is separated, very separated, from the optional program like IB. Additionally, excuse me, additionally, I would like to raise concern about inconsistency in communication from the board. Last year, I sent multiple emails regarding bullying, and while I did receive the typical response of Mr. or Mrs. X will get in touch with you, I never heard from anyone else, which is fine. But when I asked for data and questions regarding IB versus AP, I heard from two board members. And although I appreciated the time, as a mother, as a parent, when you're going through bullying and your child is being bullied, any sort of communication to a parent would have meant so much more during a time like that than defending or deflecting the IB program. Transparency, consistency in responses are the key to maintaining trust with the community. I hope the board will consider its review of communication strategies when it comes with the public. Thank you. Oh, and well done to the presenters today, it was so wonderful to hear from all of you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, this brings us to board comments.
I'll take an opportunity to announce that Somers Partners in Prevention is having their bi-annual medication take-back day, and that'll be on October 26th. That's a Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And our community can safely dispose of unused and expired medication, vaping devices, e-cigarettes, sharps, and you can bring a non-perishable item to donate to the St. Luke's food pantry. So thank you. And that'll be in front of the police department on Route 100. I'm sorry, Primrose Street, yeah, that's 139. Thanks.
Thanks to all the presenters. One of the big things that stood out, foreign languages, starting at the younger age in Primrose, I think that's a great opportunity for kids to start learning and hearing it. I know it's a lot harder to learn a foreign language as you get older, so, you know, I think that's a great program for them. Thank you.
I also want to thank the presenters. It's really exciting to hear about these opportunities that are going, that are being offered for our kids. I think it's really, really, I know how difficult it is to condense so much information into a short amount of space. I'm reminded of Mark Twain, I would have written a shorter letter, but I didn't have enough time. I know there's a lot of information in there, you've condensed that really, really well. I thought that was, that was really, really helpful. I think it was really good to see the progression through the different buildings. So we've got these nice buckets, these four areas that carry over from one school to the other, with the support from the admin team and the learning curriculum support that we're getting across the level is absolutely wonderful. I think, I think the risk-taking, the character development is so important, right? We talk about how, how our schools are developing good citizens, and an important part of that is letting these children know that they can take risks to do the right thing, right? We really want that introduced across the board. And I agree completely with Dominic, the introduction of Spanish at Primrose, how exciting is that for the kids? I, you know, how many times have we heard kids saying, "I speak 12 languages," because they can say hello in 12 different languages, right? Kids love that, they love that immersion, the excitement of that. And I think it's just a wonderful way to bring that global citizenship down to a level where the smallest kids in our, in our schools can really be excited about that. So I think it's wonderful, I think these, these success criteria that you've put together across the board, the entire team, from the buildings to the, to the learning curriculum leaders, it's wonderful. And I think this is really, really a good way for the community to see, in a nutshell, what the schools are aiming for. So well done, everyone.
Yeah. I think we all agree, of course, but thank you for the presentations. I think it always is, is great to see what that you're reflecting, the school district, how it reflects every year on what our practices are. And it's a big process, as was just shared, there's, there's a lot behind it, a lot of data to start with. Then where does it go from there? You start with the data, then figuring, figuring out what are the experiences, and then you have to find out what, what are, how do you improve and where to target? I love, some of the things that stood out to me that I really loved, trusting the kids and what their capabilities are, and making it clear to them, they're not just cogs going through some process. They, having them understand the process, the, the language and some of those. I think if we reflect on our own lives, when, when we know the reason we're doing something, it gets us more engaged. When we understand why we're doing something, it helps a lot with our learning and how we learn or how we realize and pinpoint where we need to put some extra effort. So I love the fact that you trust the kids and you bring them into that, I think that's terrific. And that you're looking at both data and you're looking at things on a personal level. It's, they're not exclusive, but you have to figure out how they work and they help pinpoint each other. So thank you for continuing to make the effort to do better and be better for everyone.
Yes, thank you, everybody. And just to piggyback on what Chad just said exactly, like, you're making, you're clearly making data-driven decisions, but also looking at kids as more than a number, which I, I mean, I know that you guys do, but I just, it's, it's nice to see the fruits of that labor and all the great things that are in place and exciting actions that are being taken. And the, and the focus, I mean, this, the approach to learning skills and the soft skills being taught and executive functioning pieces, it's so important to just lay that foundation. And then the progress in the Science of Reading has been phenomenal this past couple of years, and we're so far ahead of the game, I feel like comparatively. So it's, it's so great to see. I also will throw in that apparently the Mets game is final at 7 to 2, Phil, just so you know. We didn't have it on the agenda tonight because it was a workshop, but I did want to update everybody on our superintendent search. Our, the Somers School website has officially been updated with the superintendent search tab, you can now find it on our homepage. So if you go to somerschools.org, it's right there on the, up on the left-hand side. The information includes the upcoming town hall events where representatives from both school leadership, I'm sorry, representatives from school leadership will meet with members of the community and seek input on what specifications the board should use in choosing our next superintendent. So the dates are listed on there, but the virtual meetings are October 16th at 10:00 and 4:00 p.m., at 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And in-person town hall meeting on October 17th at 7:00 p.m. in the, right here in the Somers Middle School library. If you'd like to... If you'd like to attend, please email Nancy Carrato at ncarato@somerschools.org. No later than October 14th, hopefully-ish, to get all those names in. And we can get a list over to school leadership.
Sorry, I just wanted to jump in. I just want to clarify, school leadership is our consultant.
Yes. That we've hired, that we appointed at our August.
Independent consultants, yeah.
Yes, that we have appointed at our August 27th meeting. They're going to be the ones searching out our recruits for this process, so the board can interview them. So let's see, if you can't attend any of those events and would still like to offer input, or even if you just like to offer input, we'd like if everyone also fills out the survey. It's available on their website under the superintendent search tab. There's actually a separate page for the survey, as well as, I believe it was emailed out via Parents Square to all the parents in the school districts right before the Rosh Hashanah break. So please fill out the survey. We, we want to hear the input, we want to gather everything. School leadership's going to take the, that data and information and compile a report back to the board, and we're going to review that and create and approve our search specifications at a special meeting of the board on October 30th, again, right here in the exciting Somers Middle School library. And if you have any questions about the search process or the status, please consult the website. And if you still have questions, please reach out to BOE members at somerschools.org. And I also wanted to remind, I know it was brought up in the presentations, but I also wanted to remind all board members that we have a site visit next week to the middle school, where we will get a glimpse into the teacher-directed WINTIME periods. So that'll be on October 16th at ten fifteen AM. Okay, good. Then, and we're gonna, and then we'll report back, obviously, at a future board meeting when, after that, but I look forward to that visit. And then this was also brought up, but another great opportunity for parents is the Middle Years Program Parent Night being offered on October 23rd at seven PM, again, here in the library. Jenis Catino, the Middle Years Program Coordinator, will be facilitating, and you're going to learn about the NYPD framework here at the middle school, what it means to be an NYPD school, what the teaching and learning tools look like. And we encourage all SMS, SIS, and Primrose parents to attend. And again, it's a guaranteed experience for all students in sixth or eighth grade. It's not a, like, something you have to apply for or anything like that, it's a, it's a guaranteed experience for all students, so. And, yeah, again, thank you guys, the presenters tonight, it was a great presentation, so.
I just have a few items. I'd also like to thank the central office and building administrators for their presentations of the building-level success plans and SMART goals for the 2024-2025 school year, especially Meg, who found out yesterday, she was going to have to fill in for Katie, and Kristin, who found out around nine o'clock this morning that she was going to have to fill in for Jen. So I really appreciate the administrator stepping up and, and taking care of that. I'd also like to thank Chris McCartney and the Facilities Department for the work that they have, have done over the summer and the beginning of the school year to get the schools into the shape they are for the new year, particularly the work that was done to renovate and relocate the, the guidance and social-emotional team offices at SMS. And then I had a wonderful experience this morning when I had the opportunity to read to students in Ms. Sarico's class and Ms. Duffy's class at SIS. And I actually participated in the modified morning meeting prior to reading to the students. And I'm looking forward to many more opportunities to read to students at Primrose and SIS over the next few weeks and months. So, that's it.
Okay. Resolved that the special meeting or workshop of the Board of Education be adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.